Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, May 26, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and livestreamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Once you've been called, please give your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will be given three minutes. Our first speaker of the day is Ikuhana Hau Malkina. You're currently on mute. There you go.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Greetings and good day. My title is Ikuhana Hau Malkina. I am the Grand Inca of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today I would like to speak once again about my brother and his good friend, Michelle Rankin, who died on May 25th of 2006. In a tragic police chase that did not involve the police chasing them, they were chasing Devon Mau, a young man that they suspected of selling drugs. Resulted in the death of two people. City Council has a unique opportunity to make this wrong right. Do you have the ability to do so? You no longer get the opportunity to control the narrative. You will not silence our voices. We are cities under siege. We are in a state of emergency. These are sanctioned murders that we are experiencing. And they're getting increasingly bold. This is genocide. Make no mistake about it. And you cannot allow municipal officers to hide behind their blue wall of silence. I would like to read a few names onto the record. Frank Smart, Ramire Tally, Bruce Kelly, Jerome Smith, Michelle Rankin, Mark Daniels, David Streeter, Bernard Rogers, Jerry Jackson, Antoine Rose, Johnny Gamage. All died here in Pennsylvania, mostly right here under the jurisdiction of your city council. In a moment of silence, I recognize for them all. Something must be done, something bold, something new, something outside of the norms of just allowing things to get swept under the rug. Your silence is ignorance and complacency. And there is no space for that in today's world. Accountability is where we're moving towards. And to do nothing and to delay this justice is justice denied. Families are hurting. People are hurting. And the redress that is needed will not bring our family and loved members back or lineage back to us. However, there are children who miss the quality of life with their parents, with their mothers and their fathers. We must do and go above and beyond to protect these children, to protect our babies. And so City Council has that opportunity to do so. I would like to thank Councilman O'Connor for making sure that facial recognition and holding police accountable. That was accountability right there. Calling them out on the carpet, saying what goes against the norm is what needs.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shamon Poma.
Greetings and grand new day. I am Shamon Poma Chakma Mihalahi of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And on yesterday, we gathered together at Westinghouse Park. A plethora of different people coming together to speak up and have their voices heard on addressing the indiscriminate ways that the police have gotten away. Pittsburgh City Police have gotten away with unlawful speeding during throughout the communities. And my daughter was a victim of this as well. As recent as a few months ago, and her quality of life may never be the same again. And it is on video that police officers speeding placed no warning lights on, no emergency lights, no sirens, as they were going well above the speed limit. And my daughter, as a passenger in an automobile, as they were turning, making a lawful turn, the police crashed into their automobile, smashing them into the wall of a building and a barrier. And the police automobile was totaled. These very officers did not come to the hospital to check on the, see that my daughter was okay and see that her aid was rendering, healing for herself. As she lied there almost it's very hard to say, in so much pain, her back will never be the same. Her knee will never be the same, and she has constant migraine. She's in physical therapy. No police came to, to see if she was all right, to take a report, to give a, a reason for their speeding with no lights and no siren, no warning, well above the speed limit. As they were coming down, it was like a torpedo that hit the back of the automobile, smashing her and the, the one who was operating the automobile, her cousin. So it is a great time for you, City Council, following up with what our Grand Inca just said. And, and I thank you, O'Connor, as well. It is now time for the, be held accountable for these egregious actions and for them to follow their own policies, codes and statutes as it relates to high-speed chases in the communities. Making sure that they are following their own oath of office and to know and to cause no harm. I thank you and I look forward to you doing the right thing and for our nation working with you and the people to do the right thing by these victims and hold these officers all accountable. Thank you and have a grand day. I yield.
Thank you very much. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers, which takes us to our Standing Committee's agenda, and would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Eight Members President.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have two supplemental papers, the first being Bill 1520.
Bill 1520 Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Camo Customs in the Amount of $11,500 for Restoration of a Mural at Quarry Field.
Motion to approve. Very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you, Members. This is the expenditure for the payment to Camo, who is the artist who has restored the mural at the Quarry Field concession stand that all Members know was horribly defaced with unbelievably racist and hurtful comments. So appreciate your support and ask that Members please vote in the affirmative today. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further Members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1531.
Bill 1531 Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Director of Finance Acting as the Chief Administrative Officers of the Employees Municipal Pension Plan to perform an actuarial analysis in accordance with Act 205 in Ordnance Pension Act of 1975, Section 8 Pension Allowance, Paragraph 4I, to determine the cost of eliminating the Social Security offset for all active non-union employees members of the municipal pension fund hired after June 30th, 2004.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? See, Councilman Coghill.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say it's the number one complaint I get from, you know, the Public Works Division and the people who are not grandfathered in on that. So Councilwoman Kell Smith and whoever else is spearheading this with you, you know, you have my full cooperation. It's something I think needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair, my, there, my camera wasn't working. I apologize. I think it's working now. I'm just curious if this is going to calculate like the retroactive cost? So when it says like eliminate the pension, the Social Security offset from 2004, can someone, maybe the sponsor can tell me kind of what's quite, like what are the questions that are going to be answered?
So actually, I think that's something that we, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so I think that if, if we can look back, we do want to go back, but I'm not sure legally what we have to do. So those are questions that we're going to ask as we move forward. And I'd hope to talk with Mr. Anderson. I think he's on, Director Anderson, is he on?
But this is just for costing out.
Right.
Not untangling the, addressing the legalities.
Right. Yeah, not yet. No, we just want to see what the cost would be and what, and if we do go back, because I think legally you have to go back. This is what somebody said to me. So I think we'd have to find out that, how far we have to go back. But I do know that, I believe Councilwoman Harris was the only elected official in 2019 that left without a pension. So or with a partial pension. But other than that, I think it's only been, it's been, not only, but it's been our employees that work without, were not employees.
And then I'm, I'm hoping that it will also communicate kind of how many people are eligible for retirement. And so we have breakdowns so we can really see what the cash flow would be if we act and of what, how we can do projections, right?
I think there's a couple of things we want to look at. I also said to somebody, we need to look at, we have a lot of part-time employees and some are over the age of 70 ineligible for pensions and still working. And I just think that there's, you know, we talk about how we should be treating other employees. We tell, we're good at telling other private sector people how they should treat their employees, how they should pay their employees. But here we are, not treating our own employees the way that we should. And they work really hard for these pensions. They work really hard. And some are just now finding out after 30 years that they're not even eligible or not working 30 years, but for, since 2004, that they're not eligible for something that they've worked for, for so long. So I think that it's, I think it's a moral responsibility that we have to make sure that we're taking care of our own employees. And so I just want to see what that cost would look like and, and what we need to do as a council to do that.
I didn't read it. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't read it as addressing part-time employees.
No, that's not yet. That's down the road. There's something else I want to look at.
Okay, got it. All right. So, okay, because I was saying, we're going to have to add that if you want that answer.
I'm saying, in general, I think we need to start looking at how we treat our own employees.
I agree. I agree. But I'm just kind of wondering, I want to kind of make sure that we're asking for the right information, because sometimes we don't get the information back that we wanted.
And I'll make sure that we.
Clarify what the questions are.
And I will make sure I talk to and clarify some of this with Mr. Anderson, or with Director Anderson.
Appreciate it.
For it goes forward. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Kraus?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Just briefly, I just want to reinforce the Council President's comments before we get out into the weeds and speculative comment or question that, that the piece really is intended to explore the financial impacts of, of it. And there are many questions to be asked and time for them to be answered, but at this stage of the game, it really is about exploring financial impact should we go down that road. So thank you very much, and I appreciate Member's support. I think it's, it's the right thing for us to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Let the record reflect, Councilwoman Strasburger is also with us. Bill 1501.
Bill 1501 Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of William J. Miller Jr. Esquire in an amount not to exceed $25,200 for the arbitration services rendered in connection with the city and the FOP Act 111 Interest Arbitration.
Motion to hold executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held. Bill 1502.
Bill 1502 Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Desiree Pinkston and her attorney, Michael J. Healy Esquire in the amount of $28,500 in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to hold executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held. We now need a motion to approve our invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We now need a motion to approve the interdepartmental transfers.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices, transfers are approved, excuse me. Now I need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Councilman O'Connor, one defer paper, Bill 1087.
Bill 1087 Ordnance Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordnance is Title I Administrative Article 3 Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety to add a new subsection 11617 Prohibition of Execution of No-Knock Warrants by requiring all city police officers when executing any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premises.
A motion to table.
Uh, then second.
So, Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, would you, yeah, Mr. Chair, please.
So this did pass the referendum. Therefore, we suggested that it be table. If, if in case we ever need to bring it back, we can. But we don't want it to necessarily be competing against what was passed.
Gotcha. Good. Thanks. Yeah, happy to second then.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess.
On.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair. Eyes nine, no zero. Bills table.
Thank you. New papers under Public Safety Services, Bill 1505.
Bill 1505 Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter into relevant agreements or execute required purchase order for a Hyundai EDR kit, the GIT America, at a cost not to exceed $7,715.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1506.
Bill 1506 Resolution Amending Resolution Number 367 of 2018, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended agreement with Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc. for the provision of uniforms, duty equipment and related tailoring and embroidering services for the Department of Public Safety by extending the term for one additional year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1507.
Bill 1507 Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner to purchase a custom-built fire hydrant cutaway for the fire training academy and further providing in it, in agreement and expenditures not to exceed $14,999.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, first new paper, Bill 1488.
Bill 1488 Resolution Granting unto BBC Pittsburgh LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to projecting signs at 1022 Chestnut Street, 23rd Ward, 2nd Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1490.
Bill 1490 Resolution Granting unto Lamar Advertising Company their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to install three exterior lights unto an existing building at 503 Port Place, 1st Ward, 3rd Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1491.
Bill 1491 Resolution Granting unto Trade Doma's 14 LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to install a set of entry stairs to an existing building at 57 South 16th Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second, very brief discussion. I'm on Google Map right now. I just may have misinformation. It looks like it could be replacement of an existing staircase. I'm happy to approve today, and if there's changes, I might bring them up on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1492.
Bill 1492 Resolution Granting unto the Bunter Company their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a trench drain at the intersection of Corliss Street and Chartiers Avenue in the 20th Ward, 2nd Council District.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1494.
Bill 1494 Resolution Authorizing the proper officers of the city pursuant to Section 4 of Resolution 680 of 1951 to cause the removal of a certain side track as further described herein and further providing such officers with authorization to evacuate and enforce all purposes provided in the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second, brief discussion.
Question, Councilperson.
Yes, this is actually giving us the, the ability to use Section 4 of a resolution from back in 1951. There was an agreement between the HG Heinz Company and the city about the railroad tracks that went across River Avenue. And, well, they're not being used anymore. And time and time again, there are cyclists that are being injured over these tracks. So people that use this, use this road frequently, you know, by car or by bicycle, they would, they would be familiar with this, but this is an effort to remove them. So this will officially give the new owners notice to remove them, or we will do it and then, and then lean the property.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1495.
Bill 1495 Resolution Granting unto Kelly Bender their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to install a new awning roof and railings on an existing porch with steps that encroach into the right-of-way at 34 Keenway in 6th Ward, 7th Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1496.
Bill 1496 Resolution Authorizing the Transfer by the City to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Certain temporary construction easement rights on certain property of the 4th Ward of the city in cooperation with the Penn Dot Construction Project.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. Bill 1497.
Bill 1497 Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018 entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 City BG Program, the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Windsor Avenue by $100,000 and increases step repair and replacement by $100,000.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if anybody's online to speak to this. I know these steps, while they jet out into the street, many people hit them. They're city steps. And I just wanted to see, I guess, as to the scheduling of it, is that going to be done? They finished the intersection that, that was right there. So I'm looking to find out if that is actually scheduled to be done soon, the steps. Iris Director Rex, I see you.
Oh, Councilman, this, those steps are still, we're still working on resolving some of the issues and restoring those steps. So it is a tight corner. There's some other geometric issues that need to be addressed in order to do that step repair. So we don't have a timeline just yet for those steps.
So, so, so the steps where they are currently is where they're going to be? We don't, we're not like taking, not moving on?
We're looking at ways that we can, can improve that so that we can get a little bit more maneuvering space on that street.
Yeah. Yeah. See, I thought that we like had bought a little bit of property there where we could move them back off of the road, but that is not the case, is what you're saying.
It's not right-of-way. So for the way that we operate, it needs to be right-of-way to do the projects. So right now, we're really just looking at what, what are the options and then what is the associated cost with doing that, because it would require changes to that hillside, which then start to have cascading effects on cost.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was curious about. By the way, the intersection looks beautiful. They did a really nice job. That's actually in Councilwoman Kell Smith's district, but, but I oversee that little piece of it.
Not exactly. Actually, your part was cut out. Some other project. But that was before you got on board. That was before you. But, but, Mr. Chair, I, I just like to, I just like to also thank Director Ricks for her work there. It is a tremendous improvement to that area, and I do want to see the steps addressed as well. So I did hear we're moving money. Is that, is that what we're doing with this bill?
Removing money from this one program account to put it into the steps account so that we can address various steps projects that we're, we're experiencing gaps in that project delivery right now.
Various steps or, but it's not going to take away from these steps, correct?
This will, it is not specifically for these steps.
But do, what, what do you need for those steps to happen?
We need to still continue design on those steps to address, as I explained to.
Yeah. Funding it. So I, what I don't want to do is take funding from a project in my district and, and move it away from my district. If, I mean, I know that you did steps in my district and other places, but I want to make sure that this project gets done. And so you just need additional funding too, correct?
This project will need additional funding to deliver the steps for veteran Windsor.
And I, and I'm just going to say so the public knows, when we do the funding from the, the help that we get from the federal government, I, I fully intend on making sure that we're addressing a lot of our infrastructure needs across the city. And I think other Members feel the same as well, that we want to make sure that our priorities, that in the response, things we are responsible for are getting addressed and taken care of. are getting addressed and taken care of. So to me, this will be one of those issue steps at City of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Mr. Chair, briefly.
Councilman Gross.
Yeah, thank you. Director, good morning. Thanks for being here. Can I go back to fourteen ninety-six, which is the PennDOT project for easement on certain properties in the fourth ward of the city? Um, a little vague, I tried to research it, but for whatever reason, legislature wasn't cooperating this morning. Can you just give me a brief synopsis? If not, I'm happy to do a phone call after the meeting.
If you can give me just a second to pull up my notes because we had a number of items on the agenda today.
Fourteen ninety-six, Director.
Thank you. Just give me a second to pull it up.
Yeah, sure. No, no, thank you. And again, we can, uh, do a call afterwards if it's more convenient.
Sorry, I'm just trying to read it. Uh, this is, uh, great. This is for the project that Penda is doing in the vicinity of, um, Bates Street. So they will need to actually occupy, um, as they, as they do that restoration of the wall, the retaining wall, some other kinds of work. Um, that's happening there. This is just for a temporary construction easement so that they can, um, so we possess um, the, the trail, the, the Great Allegheny Trail that, uh, connects their Three Rivers Heritage. And so they will just need to, uh, impinge on some of that as they do that restoration work.
So is this Bates as it intersects at Second Avenue?
Um, yeah, as it comes down. I'm sorry, not Bates, uh, Brady. I'm sorry. Apologies.
Brady as it intersects with.
As it intersects with Second, as it comes down.
Okay, so I think that might even be council. When it gets so far. Okay, good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Sorry.
Any other members? If not, Director Ricks, quick question. Do we have a running list of all the city steps and sort of their priority in terms of being repaired?
Um, we have a, uh, we have a step inventory and I'd be happy to, um, uh, uh, maybe put in the chat on this where the public can go and look at the steps inventory, um, that we have. Um, we have a prioritization of the top thirty steps, um, for improvement that we're working on. Um, we of course have eight hundred plus, uh, sets of public steps in the city. Um, so we haven't prioritized all of them, but we do have the top thirty that are prioritized.
Okay, can you just email over the top thirty?
Sure.
Thank you. Any other members? Final discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson, first new paper is Bill fifteen oh nine.
Bill fifteen oh nine, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy-two entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty-Seventeen Capital Budget. The Twenty-Seventeen C D B G Program approving the Twenty-Seventeen through Twenty-Twenty-Two Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce prayer and deliverance community opportunities by twenty-five hundred dollars and increase Jewish family and community services food pantry by twenty-five hundred dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fifteen ten.
Bill fifteen ten, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety-seven of twenty seventeen effective December twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, as amended, entitled resolution adopting and approving the Twenty-Eighteen Capital Budget, the Twenty-Eighteen C D B G Program. The Twenty-Eighteen through Twenty-Twenty-Three Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce Bhutanese Community Association by eight thousand dollars and increase Brookline Christian Food Pantry by eight thousand dollars and authorize a subsequent agreement.
Motion to approve. Uh, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, uh, first supplemental paper, Bill thirteen ninety-four.
Bill thirteen ninety-four, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to deny the renaming of Niagara Parklet to Oak Cliff Community Playground.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
Motion to approve.
A second with this is some extended discussion. We're trying to figure this out as we're doing this. Uh, and, uh, Madam Clerk Louise was just kind enough to send over uh, uh, suggested amendment language. Uh, and then, uh, but then there has been a second communication from Mr. Strellick that incorporates language from law. Are they identical? They appear to be.
They pretty much, we just may have a, a, a line here and there, but it pretty much says that, uh, the resolution overriding the recommendation of the Commission on naming public properties to deny the renaming of Niagara Parklet to Oak Cliff Community Playground.
Okay.
And then it says, whereas is the council's intent that Niagara Parklet is to be renamed to Oak Cliff Community Playground.
Yes, um, would, would Louise, would you be kind enough just to mail this to members so that they do have a, uh, a hard copy of this? But it does change language from, uh, submitting to overriding. It does add language that says it is council's intent Niagara Parklet is to be renamed Oak Cliff Community Playground. It ex- uh, extracts or strikes out language that would negate that. And it adds language that says Niagara Parklet be renamed, I'm sorry, forgive me. Uh, it renames, uh, rewrites section one that reads as follows. The Commission on Naming Public Properties Recommendation to Deny That Niagara Parklet Be Renamed Oak Cliff Community Playground is, after due consideration, not accepted by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh. The Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby authorizes that Niagara Parklet be renamed Oak Cliff Community Playground. And Councilman Burgess, with your, um, indulgence, I'd like to offer that up as an amendment.
Can, can, I, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not hostile to the amendment. I just don't have a background in this at all. I don't know about this at all. And so if, so it's at some point. You know, I need a, I don't need a long explanation, but this, I just don't know why the naming commission said, and I don't, I don't, I just don't remember uh, any of this. So, um, it may, I don't remember. I just don't know about it. That's all. So I'm not hostile to the amendment. I'm certainly welcome the amendments. Not my district, uh, not really something I'm passionate about. I just would like to understand.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I just real briefly? So, um, it is the desire of the Oak Cliff Community, uh, Council, uh, to, to name the parklet as such because there is another stretch of, of land that, uh, sits above the Parkway, uh, which is the community, uh, council's desire to actually name that Niagara Parklet at some point in time as we assemble funding to move that project ahead. Um, and so with Councilman Lavelle and Councilwoman Strasburgers, uh, indulgence and blessing, uh, as we collectively support or represent Oakland, uh, have agreed with, um, Oak Cliff that, uh, we will support their desire to name as such, to reserve that name ultimately, not at this point in time Niagara Parklet to be used for another development they wish to see happen. I hope that helps.
Okay. Why did, why did the commission say no?
Uh, there is a desire to, uh, coordinate, if you will, namings of certain areas to match unilaterally across the, uh, spectrum, uh, in, as it relates to, uh, city planning and their desire to, to sort of, um, this is similar to how we, uh, might organize the budget, if you will, and, and, and offer up certain classes and categories that would match with certain salary ranges. Their desire is to, to see sort of a, a more unilateral approach across the board. But it's, it's within the, the power of the council to, um, to assist, uh, in matters like this to, um, respect and, uh, encourage the, uh, desire of, of the community leaders. And so that's what we wish to see here. And I appreciate your, your question. Thank you.
Thank you. So the, 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 uh, do we offer the amendment?
Yes, I'm not sure if we seconded it though.
Second it back, Councilman Burgess, discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is now amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill receives affirmative recommendation.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. That takes us to Bill fourteen oh eight.
Bill fourteen oh eight, resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to formalize Brick Park's trail name Clayton Hill Trough Trail Concrete Block and Two Seventy-Six.
Motion to approve.
Needs. Oh, you're right. Sorry. Need second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill was recommended. That moves us to Innovation, Performance and Asset Amendment Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Strasburger, uh, one bill, Bill fifteen oh eight.
Bill fifteen oh eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreements through the National Association of State Procurement Official Corporateive Purchasing Program for a three-year term with Cherry Road Technologies permitting the provision of cloud solutions to support the J D E application that is some not to exceed one million fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, uh, one, first new paper, Bill fourteen ninety-nine.
Bill fourteen ninety-nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official floor facilities plan for the proposed Fifth In-Helkey Innovation Research Tower, thirty-three ninety-six Fifth Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our final bill of the day, Bill fifteen hundred.
Bill fifteen hundred, resolution adopting plan revisions of the City of Pittsburgh's official floor facilities plan for twenty-four forty Smallman Street.
Motion to approve discussion.
It was seconded, discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
I was just waiting for that noise. Um, so there's a series of typos from, and law, the law department emailed me. So Madam Clerk, if, I think you've got them actually in, in a series of emails, but I've got the full text file open. So I'll just go through it from the top. Basically everywhere that says tw- twenty-four forty, um, Smallman Street is changed, will change to twenty-four hundred. Um, so starting with the, the title, but also I don't see the address there in the text. And then everywhere in, where it says thirty-fifth ward uh, will be changing to second ward. So just the number two. So motion to amend.
Second.
Second.
Um, Madam Clerk, could you please strike out of the title twenty-four forty and replace it with twenty-four hundred? Smallman Street and then thirty-fifth, strike out and make second ward and then down, if you scroll down through the second whereas clause where it reads, um, thirty-fifth ward, strike that out and put second ward. And I'm still making sure I catch them. It looks like in the section one, exhibit A. It actually says twenty-four hundred Smallman, so that's okay. But again, the last thirty-fifth ward, please strike that out and put second ward.
Oh, no, it's.
Thank you. Think I got them all.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendments? If not, all those in favor of the series of amendments, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill receives an affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. Um, we do have a series of meeting announcements, um, this afternoon at one thirty P M. Council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill thirteen thirty-five as it relates to zoning changes on Laramore Avenue. To register for this hearing, fill out and submit the signup form on the council meeting webpage by eleven thirty this morning. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three five by the deadline. Next Monday, May thirty-first, city offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day holiday. Council will meet next Tuesday and Wednesday, June first and second at ten A M. for our regular standing committee meetings respectively. Um, also next Wednesday afternoon at one thirty P M., Council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill fourteen fourteen as it relates to inclusionary housing overlay district zoning changes. To register for next week's council meetings and the public hearing, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by nine A M. Tuesday and Wednesday for regular standing committee meetings. And by eleven thirty A M. Wednesday for the public hearing. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Are there any announcements from members? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.